Okay, we'll begin our meeting tonight. Today's June 14th, 2021. It's our regular scheduled meeting for the month. And so we welcome all the visitors here tonight. Everybody that has come out to be with us. We're excited to have you here. We welcome you. And as always, we start our meeting out with our prayer and our pledge. And so Commissioner Vaughn is going to lead us in our pledge. And we'll begin with Commissioner Allison with our prayer.
Dear God, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. And we just ask for your guidance, your direction in all the decisions that we make for McDowell County, for the citizens of McDowell County. We ask you just put that edge of protection around our citizens, keep us all safe as we go through our days, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Attention, please. I pray to the
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I hear motion, we approve the minutes.
For move.
Second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Here we approve the agenda for tonight. Motion on that.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that we add an item emailed earlier, the Door Associates settlement under administrative items.
Okay. It's a pleasure, Board.
Make motion, we accept the minutes with his addition. I make the agenda with his addition.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, we do have another person here tonight that needs to be added to the agenda, Ian Bright, and his, recognizing him tonight.
Okay. I hear motion, we add Mr. Bright to the agenda.
Make that additional, sir.
Okay.
Now, second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. First off, on our appointments, under item A, is the recognition of Superintendent Mark Garrett. We're pleased to have him here with us tonight. And did you bring any family members with you?
I was supposed to.
Yeah, because we want
When you get a hundred thousand dollar check, you need to bring somebody.
We were We were listening on my family to know if you're doing that. We had plans to roast you tonight, so we kind of wanted to.
Well, that's why I didn't bring anybody. I'm ready. Anyway, we want to recognize that Mark Garrett, we have a special resolution for him. And we appreciate all his loyalty and dedication to our county. He has been a very good asset to our county. And on behalf of the board, you know, we appreciate all the hard work. It seems like since he took the superintendent job, the McDowell County schools have excelled. And we appreciate all his hard work and dedication to this community. And we just want to recognize him tonight. He just recently received a recognition from the state. And so that was a big deal to us. And we want to present this resolution to you tonight, Mr. Garrett. And we'll have Commissioner Walker, if you will, to read that.
Sure.
Come on up here, Mark. Go hide back there.
I'm easily up there. I don't know what to do.
He beat out eighteen other superintendents for this honor too, by the way. McDowell County Resolution of Recognition for Superintendent Mark Garrett. Whereas Mark Garrett began his educational career in 1996 at Jefferson Middle School in Jefferson County, Tennessee. And whereas he began his administrative career in 2001 as an assistant principal with Watauga High School in Watauga County. And whereas in 2002, Mr. Garrett accepted his first principalship at Valley Crusus Elementary School in Watauga County. And whereas Mr. Garrett accepted the principalship of Avery High School in Avery County in 2004. Whereas after serving Avery High School successfully over eight years, Mr. Garrett became assistant superintendent of McDowell County Schools in November 2012. And whereas Mr. Garrett was appointed interim superintendent in November 2013 and permanent superintendent in April 2014. And whereas Mr. Garrett has provided leadership to the McDowell County Schools organization for over seven years. Whereas the Board of Education and Mr. Garrett have worked diligently to improve additional outcomes, educational outcomes for all students. And whereas the Board of Education and Mr. Garrett have prioritized facility upgrades, including the new Old Ford Elementary School. Tour is wonderful. And whereas Mr. Garrett collaborates with his colleagues and other community leaders with the sole focus of improving educational attainment. And whereas for all of the reasons listed above and more, the Western Region Education Service Alliance recognized Mr. Garrett as the Superintendent of the Year in the nineteen county region for the 2021 school year. Now therefore, be it resolved that the McDowell County Board of Commissioners do hereby express their appreciation for the work and dedication of Superintendent Mark Garrett to the citizens of McDowell County and specifically to the children of McDowell County. They got a great guy leading them right here, not to y'all. Give him a hand. This is signed by our board chairman, Tony Brown, this resolution is. And so there you go. Appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. Thanks, you appreciate you. Let us let our clerk get us a good picture. Get everybody. Tell me what you need me to do.
Call the commissioners.
Mr. Wood, can you come up?
Sure.
Can you make everybody else sit down? And Allison.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to work in a community with a county and with a commission that thinks about outcomes rather than personal agendas. And that's been a blessing to be here. And, you know, I share with my colleagues around the state what we're able to do here because we work together in front of issues rather than after issues happen. And that's helped us take care of a lot of things. And people benefit, and your citizens benefit, and most importantly, our kids benefit. So I accept this, I'm really on behalf of the team. I look at this as a team award. You know, you have to have a superintendent, but I'm not nearly as important as the principals in those buildings and the teachers in front of them, those people that drive the buses and the people that keep them fed, keep them clean. So when you've got eight hundred and something folks that are behind you, you can make some good progress, especially when you've got great folks. So again, I thank you.
Hold on a second, Mr. Garrett. If it's all right.
Yes, yes. I was on the school board when you came to the county. I do want to say I really appreciate your heart and your integrity. In 2014, when you were going over the school situation, which schools met, which schools had not met, it was in foul shape. And I had made a few statements in the meeting, and you said, Mr. Ellis, if it's not better than two years, you need to replace me. And that's heart. The integrity is getting the team together and making, and letting everybody do their job. And I cannot, you have been an exceptional superintendent. I think you are that way as a man, and I think you do that in your job as well. And I just wanted to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. McDowell County is, it is wonderful to have you here.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
I was especially impressed with the way you handled the day-to-day uncertainty of what you went through last year to keep everything going. You could plan at night and get up the next morning, and the whole ballgame had changed. But you kept it all smooth and kept the children the first and foremost in your, and what you did going through the building of the school. You kept us updated. You kept not only in touch, but pictures. And you got to watch it be built through you. I appreciate that. Appreciate the way that you have, our children are our greatest asset of tomorrow. And you have been instrumental to keeping them going for these years, and I appreciate it.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I want to add too that, in addition to what Mark said, we meet once a month. It's unique in this state of all hundred counties. Our county meets the school board, has two representatives in Dr. Garrett, Ashley, and two of our board members, and the college here, their president and two of their board members. And we meet once a month for about an hour and a half max, talking about ways we can help make education better for everybody here in McDowell County, no matter what the age is, whether it's a college continuing education program. So that is unique in this state, and that's one reason why things are so good. We've got so many great educational opportunities in McDowell County. A kid nowadays has four different high schools coming up he can choose from. Show me where you do that. Back when I went to school, we had one high school in little old Alexander County, and that's where you went. But the options are on the limit. Mr. Chairman, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. Allison.
Just thank you for your great leadership and leading team, and congratulations on this recognition at a regional level. It's impressive.
I tell them every month when we have our education meeting, it is the one meeting that I don't dread going to. But I enjoy working with you, sir, and it's been a pleasure, and we appreciate all the hard work you do.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Can I make one request? Can you write a note to my wife about some of these nice Like you're trying to convince her.
As you're supposed to be, dear. We have our meeting, so I'm going to slide to that. Don't get teed, sir. Next on the agenda, I'd like to go ahead, please Board, and go ahead and recognize Mr. Ian Bright here tonight. He is a young man that I have certainly grown to love, and he is so thoughtful. He went on his vacation, and while he was on his vacation, he thought about me, and I thought that was so sweet. And so he bought me a cap, and I think it'd be fitting for me to put the cap on to show you tonight. And Ian, would you come up, please? We just want to recognize you for just a minute and thank you for your thoughtfulness. You know, I think our board has proven this, and I think we want to continue to prove it and show it, that we have a love for the young people of this community in this county and the old as well. But listen, these kids are not just today, they're tomorrow, they're our future. This young man here might be sitting here in this chair one of these days as a chairman of the Board of Commissioners, and I hope that he is. But it impressed me that he was thoughtful enough and thinks enough of the leaders of this community to recognize us in such a way. And so I appreciate him. And Vice Chairman, do you have a say something?
Sure. He's symbolic of, no matter what the age of our kids are in this community, faculty on the school board knows far more about it than all of us do. But I get the, I get the honor to work with him as his youth director of church. Chris has that same privilege to do that. And McDowell County's future is bright. Don't believe in these naysayers who preach doom and gloom. With kids like this coming on, we've got a bright future in McDowell County. And I appreciate our chairman being willing to recognize him and just use him as a, to highlight the youth of McDowell County here tonight. And that's what, that's what we're trying to do, is highlight the good kids in our community who, as our chairman has said, is one day going to grow up and be our leaders. And we want to encourage them all we can now. I know growing up, people encouraged me, and I want to be encouraged with others, just like our board does. And so we're here to encourage Ian and thank him for just being a good, good kid in McDowell County. It's a lot to say there, my boy.
We better get a picture with him, and I saw he was like
And it's been nice, David was singing in the background.
Yeah, David should have to sing.
Thank you, Mouse.
They changed the song, Mouse, different.
I'll make sure I get a really good one.
Oh, yeah.
Zoom in on the head.
Thank you, my buddy.
See you.
Okay, moving along now. Under performance item B, we are happy to have with us tonight our new Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Chad Marsh. And we'd like to invite him up to the podium and let him say a few words for us. Chad, we welcome you tonight.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you for the opportunity to come before you. Most importantly, thank you for the opportunity to be your Parks and Recreation Director. Well, I consider it an absolute privilege. And my commitment, as my wife and I were getting pray about even taking the job or even applying for it, our commitment to you and to this county is service first. That is what I believe my job is all about. That's what I believe. We all are here to do is serve the citizens of our county. And as a Parks and Recreation Director, my intentions are to do just that. And that means in a number of ways. Tonight, I'd like to share a couple of things with you, Mr. Chairman, if that's okay. You know, we're wrapping up youth softball and baseball right now. And, you know, the thing that I would take away most from this is jumping off of the vice chair's point here about youth tonight is to say to you that the state of our youth is good. And I say that in the sense that we are coming, you know, through an unprecedented time through this pandemic that we're all learning how to navigate through. And having, like Mr. Ellis spends some time with the school board, I can tell you that there are some amazing young men and women that are coming through our school systems. And they just are craving a little bit of leadership, and they're just craving a little bit of guidance. They have enough friends, they've got those on the buses or at school, and they need a little bit of leadership and guidance. And that's my intention now, is to make sure that going forward, we'll do that. So to come out of this pandemic, we had three hundred plus or minus young men and women who participated in our programs this year with softball and baseball wrapped up at Maple Leaf, and tonight and tomorrow night will wrap up at Old Four. And I'm very, very pleased with everything that happened there. Looking forward to rolling into football. And I am reaching across lines to work with Mr. Garrett's group there at McDowell High School, Coach Brewer, and the fine folks of MHS football teams and West and East Middle Schools, teachers and parents there to insert the Parks and Recreation Department back into football in McDowell County. I think that's where we belong. I'm not looking to kick anybody out or upset anybody's feelings, but I am looking to insert our Parks and Recs Department back into a program, which, when I came through this, meant so much to me as a young boy. It gave me an opportunity to escape some of the harsh realities that were going on around me, and I look forward to being able to do just that for those young men and women who choose to participate in football. We will kick off, they're doing some great things this year with some special programs, such as bringing the combine back this year. And it's my full intention, with their permission, to kick off the first ever McDowell County punt pass and kick competition, so that we can get young men and women of all ages, whether they can throw a ball, kick a ball, or just want to show up, an opportunity to walk out onto McDowell Titan Stadium for free, to see Titan football players who come out and do some mentoring and a little bit of leadership. Love to see any cheerleaders who want to come out and maybe do some face paint or just spend some time with some folks and just make it a fun day that we can get our youth out and maybe enjoy some football festivities. At my department, we are working diligently to improve some of the things that we have there. Primarily, we are, we have just received several quotes to paint out the gym, which is way in need of getting painted. We have already gone through the process of getting some quotes for acoustic inserts of the acoustic panels we put in along with the ceiling. And if you're being at GM and as a coach, I can tell you, trying to talk to kids on the other side of the court is nigh impossible. So we're looking to upgrade that. But first thing we need to do is get a fresh color of paint. So we've gone through the process to get some local contractors to bring in some of that, so we can share some of that with them. And then we're going to jump right into, already we're starting working on our vehicle replacement program. We have been very fortunate to get some vehicles from the state, NCDOT, but some of those are way beyond being able to replace. And my concern is not one, you know, my folks need to be safe. Our employees need to be safe as you go up and down the road, number one. But number two, the image that we're sending. I'm not sure that's the image we want to send with rust hanging off the side of the truck. So we're going to try to improve that, and we'll work on NCDOT to get that fixed. Finally, it's my pleasure to report that the county manager and I are working on several different projects to try to improve our role in the county, at least, not least of which is certainly our role in the gun range. I'm incredibly excited to report, I got to go tour that this past week, was really encouraging what I saw there. I think the groundwork that's been laid there is going to be an incredible measure of how we move forward. Was able to get some things today from the county manager with respect to how it is that we set up our rules. It is going to be very important to me to make sure that that is a safe environment for anybody who's not just there, but it's also in a proximity where lead might be slung down the range. So we want to make sure we're doing the right thing there, and I think we'll certainly work with him on our parks plan going forward and our role in everything that has to do with Parks and Recreation in McDowell County. And that's not just a field. As we move forward, as we start developing some of our trails from the floor forward, we want to make sure that McDowell County is truly seen as an opportunity for people to come. You don't have to have a ball in your hand to come enjoy some of the beautiful, God-given things we have here in this part of western North Carolina. So, Mr. Chairman, that's, that's what I bring to you tonight, sir.
Appreciate that. I've known Chad all his life, just a little child, and I watched him grow up and watched him go off and join the Navy, which I was proud of since I was ex-Navy. And so we have, we share a lot in common. He played ball for me when I, he was just a child, and he was just a good boy. And I've always thought a lot of him. I was happy to hear that he was a choice that Mr. Wood made, he and personnel manager made for this position. I was happy to hear that. And so we look forward to great things happening. We're just excited to have you here with us.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, four things, well, one item with four points really. Okay, adult program, we've heard a lot as commissioners about programs for adults. So four things to write down, Chad, adult volleyball leagues, adult basketball leagues, and these are open leagues, four-corner dodgeball, I've got that one, and frisbee golf. Just people's mentioning that to me.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
But we're glad to have you on board. You do a great job. Know that about it.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say, very excited, very excited about you getting this position. In your comments, you did mention the getting the condition of certain vehicles or buildings or fields or property. I do want to try to encourage you, as well as all other department heads, to have our world-class expectation of what that should be. And you're going to have our support, and I do appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
I am excited you're here. I know you're not a quitter, you are a go-getter, and you've already shown that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
As I've talked to you already, Ted, I'm very excited for the future of our Parks and Recreation Department with your leadership and guidance. I'll add one item to Commissioner Walker's list, adult softball. Looking forward to the future.
Thank you, sir.
Keep growing. That's right. A few comments. You know, we've had a couple of department transitions over the last couple of months, and someone in my position, that can be very stressful, and it has been for a lot of reasons. And so when you crest that hill in recruitment and you do interviews and you find that person and you find the right fit for this community and this organization, that's, it's worth all the trials and tribulations when, you know, people move on. And so he's been very busy. Our phone has been very active between each other, phone calls and texts and things to get. I knew in the interview that if he got this job, he is not the kind of guy to sit behind a desk and wait for things to happen. He is making things happen that you all want to see happen, and this community wants to see happen. And so that's what's important, that he's reflecting what y'all want to do, and he's taken us to the next level. So there's a lot more to come, a lot of things to get accomplished, but he was the guy for it and will make you proud.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, thank you very much, Chad.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Next on the agenda tonight, if I don't see, we've got another great guy to recognize here tonight with another resolution. And we'd like to, we welcome Officer Wade Keener and his loving wife, Ruth. We're glad to have her here as well. And so we'd like for you, both you guys, if you will, to come forward. And we're going to read a resolution, and we're going to honor you for all your dedication and hard work. And while he's, while he's coming up, I'd just like to say on behalf of our board, you know, we, we'd like to express our gratitude for some thirty years of service. I think that's correct, in that city, thirty years of service that you've given our community. And, you know, I know you've served many long hours, many long days, nights, and weekends, and we appreciate that. And that says a lot about you, the kind of man you are, and it says a lot about your wife, the kind of woman she is to support you during all these long, hard hours that you put in for our beauty. And we just thank you tonight for that. And Mr. Walker, you go ahead.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman. Wade, on behalf of the board, I'm going to read this resolution, sir. Resolution of appreciation for U.S. Forest Service Law Enforcement Officer Wade Keener. Whereas Wade Keener served with U.S. Army Military Police from July 27, 1987 until November 10, 1991. And whereas he served with the North Carolina Department of Corrections from August 1993 through June 1994. And whereas he served with the Western Carolina University Campus Police, part-time and full-time, from September 1993 through January 2000. And also served at the North Carolina Arboretum as security officer from August 1994 through April 2001. Whereas Wade Keener has been the United States Forest Service Law Enforcement Officer from April 2001 until his retirement on May 31, 2021. It's about twenty years, isn't it? And whereas that is a, that is a total thirty-two years of public protection and service to our country and our state and county. Whereas Wade Keener has worked incredibly hard to keep Curtis Creek a beautiful area for our families to enjoy, and worked to keep our forest safe. And whereas he worked, has worked with county and municipal law enforcement to ensure a quicker and more effective response time to incidences. And whereas Wade Keener has worked with United States Forest Service staff to protect their natural resources and United States Forest Service engineers to repair roads for public use. And whereas he has provided invaluable assistance to emergency services on multiple search and rescue missions. And whereas he has worked with several organizations, such as Trout Unlimited, to designate campsites on Curtis Creek in order to protect our forest resources. And whereas Wade Keener has shown compassion, where a citation could have been issued, a lot of people in McDowell County are grateful about that. Instead, he took the person to a shelter for help, took another person to lunch so they could be fed and purchased a tent and sleeping bag for another individual so they could weather the cold. And whereas Wade Keener has been a dedicated public servant, working tirelessly to preserve our county's spectacular natural resources and ensure the safety of our citizens while enjoying these resources. Now therefore, be it resolved that McDowell County Board of Commissioners do hereby express their appreciation for the work and dedication of Wade Keener to the citizens of McDowell County adopted this the fourteenth day of June 2021, signed by Chairman Tony G. Brown. Congratulations on your retirement, and you've done a tremendous job serving people in this county. Appreciate it.
Picture, please, Mike.
Sure, sure.
Appreciate it all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it, sir. I think Mr. Keller was wanting to say a word too as well. Hang on here for a minute, we'll have some more comments. Then would that you say something if you'd like?
Good evening. Appreciate the board recognizing Officer Keener and his wife, Ruth. You know, from Superintendent Mark Garrett, the recognition of him tonight, and now Wade, all of these people play enormous or such important relationships we have with these individuals and these agencies, and Wade is no different. The service that Wade provided to this county is, there's a tremendous loss that's taking place. While we're so excited and grateful for Wade, we hate to see him retire because of what he did for this community to keep the national forest safe and provide assistance to emergency services. Whether it was on the national forest, a serious incident, Wade was always ringing one of our phones saying, what can I do to help you? And that's the type of partner Wade was at the U.S. Forest Service. His commitment to cleaning up a lot of these locations in the national His commitment to cleaning up a lot of these locations in the national forest, it can't, I can't say enough words. He turned Curtis Creek into a dangerous place into a safe place because of his work there. Working by itself primarily and then covering, I'm not sure how many counties. I know five counties, and being the single officer was a huge task for him. I got the opportunity to attend his retirement dinner or luncheon. And what struck me is how hard, I knew Wade worked hard, but when they started rattling off the citations and the incident reports taken, Wade worked very, very hard. And he just didn't work hard. He always did the right thing. And if you were a family member or a family obeying the law in Curtis Creek, you're always happy to see Wade. If you were someone breaking the law and doing something you weren't supposed to do in Curtis Creek or another location, no one wanted to see Wade. But he put safety back into the Pisgah National Forest. And for that, we're thankful. We're thankful for Wade and his wife Ruth for the many years of support. But him being willing to answer the calls that we placed for assistance and standing side by side protecting our personnel, offering assistance to search and rescue missions, it means the world. More importantly, we appreciate the friendship that you continue to have with all of us. And we'll always be grateful for you and your service and what you mean to this county.
Thank you.
Commissioner, a chance to say a word, please.
Wade, Patrick. I got a ticket up there when I was 14 years old. It wasn't you. And it was, I had a problem getting the fish off my hook, and he took it off the hook. The guy said, "He caught eight fish." And I told him, "Six." But I do appreciate hearing some of the stories that you did work with people and things like that. But it is amazing of what's been cleaned up because I have seen Curtis Creek in a bad way. And it is much, much, much better now. And I'm glad I'm able to put a face with the name. So, it's an honor.
Thank you.
I had an opportunity to work with you a little bit when I was at Sheriff's Office, and he was always a pleasure to call and need. But he was always a pleasure if you dropped by too. Always friendly and on a job. Appreciate you. Thank you for your service.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your service to our country, to our state, and to our county. Really appreciate it.
I appreciate it.
But we certainly do appreciate all your hard work. Now, just because you retired doesn't mean Ruth can't. She's got to keep working.
That's right.
She's telling me all the truth about that. Of course, I'm not going to be, I retired too, so I'm not going to be mad at her.
Yeah, I mean you do.
Okay, well, good, good.
Now, she's had a year to get the honeydew list together. So, retirement is only a window.
That's it.
Maybe you can bring out a job.
Yeah, I got to get out of the house. We're all retiring. That's sort of the sign that we're all pretty close to the same age, I guess. Anyway, we appreciate your service. Uh, Mr. Walker, would you like to say a word?
It's always great to see both Keeners, and I finally put them together as being a couple tonight. But Wade, Wade and I didn't interact a whole lot. But whenever we did, he was always very professional. And I know Nick Larson, the district ranger, and his staff are missing you right now. And I just appreciate your service, as I do and the rest of the county do for your service. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Would you like to say a word? I'd like to thank, first of all, I probably wouldn't be here today if it wasn't every day that I went to work that I prayed to God to keep me safe. Because like William said, I did work by myself. I was always by myself. You know, there was a time there for a number of years where I had a partner, Jason, and I had to mention him because Jason Chris was, you know, he served people in this county as a deputy. And then he came to the Forest Service and worked right alongside of me, you know, in all the same areas that I did. And he encompassed some of the same things that I did as far as, you know, the violators, the drugs, the guns, the people in the fight, and out there by yourself. And together, many of both had a big impact on Curtis Creek, wasn't just me. But it's other areas as well. And, but, you know, God kept me safe because I would pray every day that I would make it home. And thankfully, I did. But when I first came here, Curtis Creek was, it was the party central. Sheriff's Office had to go up there about every week to pull drunks out of the road, fights, you know, I did as well. I'd get up there and see people passed out in the middle of the road on picnic tables, shooting guns at 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning. And I made it my commitment to just make it a better place. And there's a lot of people didn't like me because of it, but I think a lot more people did. And it bared fruit. In about 2008, 2009, it started really changing over. And people would go up there with their families and say that for the first time in many years, they'd go up there with their families and enjoy the places that we have on the national forest. And that made me feel really good to know that all the blood, sweat, and tears that I put in up there, that it actually made a difference to somebody and they were coming out to enjoy it. So, I hope it stays that way. But, you know, we'll see what happens. But hopefully, they'll get somebody in here that, an officer with Forest Service in here that's a strong presence and will keep it up. So, but I appreciate everything. I appreciate William and Craig and all the guys that work with ELC and the Sheriff's Office too. They've been a big partner in everything that I've done. And I appreciate this very much from you guys.
Thanks, sir. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda tonight is planning board ordinance update. We've got Honorable Ronald Harmon here with us tonight. We're proud to have him here with us. He's an hard worker for the county. And we will declare ourselves in a public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're in the process of the update of the general statute, the enabling statute, which has for years been 153A, has now become 160D. In 2019, the General Assembly adopted a complete reauthorization of the statute. So, with that, the county has to go through and update all of our planning ordinances to reflect 160D. In that, some of the ordinances, some of our land use ordinances, had some changes that require a public hearing. The two that require it were the zoning and the historic preservation ordinance. The historic preservation ordinance had two small changes. The plan, or the zoning ordinance, as you saw in the memo, had several changes, none of which changed what the actual zoning ordinance does. It adds different layers of accountability. It adds some different steps for when you do a zoning variance. So, I'm asking that the boards tonight accept these changes so we can put those into the ordinance and reflect our change for 160D and be in compliance with the state's request.
Okay. Let me go ahead now and declare us in a public hearing session. And we will...
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we go ahead and have a public hearing for certain issues.
Okay. Motion, second. Second. Okay, we'll consider us in a public hearing. Any questions or comments? Mr. Wood, do you have anything to say?
Just in case anyone in the audience is wondering, this is not adding any additional restrictions on the property, as Mr. Harmon said. It's just tweaking the language a little bit. So, it's not any new restriction on property. It's just part of the process. It's maybe about five or six years in the making from the legislature. So, it's taken a long time to get here, but it's one thing off the checklist after tonight.
Any other questions, comments, anyone? Okay, we can take action on this now.
Make a motion, we have a public hearing.
Make a motion, we have a public hearing.
Second.
Say it, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion, we approve the regulations that we have received from staff as presented.
We've got a motion to approve, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do you have a motion we go out? We're going out of public hearing. So, we need to go into public hearing again over the next item.
Thank you.
Which is, this is the 2022 budget, excuse me, I got lost there. Okay, and it will be a public hearing, the 2022 budget public hearing. So, it's the general statute 159-7. So, I will declare us in that public hearing session at this point. We will only make a motion when we go out.
It's like me to give an overview.
Yes. What was yours, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, again, North Carolina General Statute 159-7. It's also called the Local Government Budget and Fiscal Control Act. It's a mouthful. It requires every local government in North Carolina to hold a public hearing before it adopts its budget for the coming fiscal year. Again, for us, starts from July 1st. We held a budget presentation on May 28th in this room. The budget's been available for inspection. And just a quick rundown of some of the highlights. The total budget for the general fund is at $49,728,636. Was the presented budget. And that was a growth of 8.36% over the current year. Again, you're required to accept public comment on the budget and then close out the public hearing. And you are allowed any, allowed to pass the budget at any point after the hearing, up until June 30. Did mention a couple of weeks ago that the tax assessors indicated if you waited for any rate changes, anything after June 18th, for that approval, that could delay billing. So, if you were to make any rate changes for this or any other rates, that would preferably be done by the end of this week.
Okay, we've all had ample time to look at our proposed budget. And any questions or comments from anyone here tonight about the budget? If not, do you have a motion we go out of public hearing?
Some of, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. What's your question, the board, on the proposed budget?
Mr. Chairman, we had conversations as a board with Mr. Wood concerning some board members wanting to make sure that we try to honor the request where we had raised the property tax rate by the three and three-quarters to handle all the courthouse additions and renovations. That's been completed. And the goal was, and it was stated, that we try to lower that rate as soon as possible and do it when we could and not harm the organization in any way. So, Mr. Wood, I've got a question. There were three items discussed at our last meeting. And two specifically, I want to focus on that and ask you a question. The property tax collection rate, we had had in the proposed budget at 98.5. And, you know, you have stated in times past that you can, as a board, legally raise that to the amount that was collected in the previous year, which was 99.1. So, my question is, in an effort to be able to give the taxpayers a penny break on the property tax rate, that is one of the tools or one of the vehicles we looked at, with the second one being raising the sales tax projection up to 3%. And we've had an average over the last four years, I think it's 5.7, growth in that item on the average. Some years it's been 11%, but average of 5.7. So, between those two items doing that, would that give us, be the dollar amount sufficient to be able to lower the revenue side on the property tax by lowering it by a penny?
Based on the calculations for those two revenues, yes, it would balance out the reduction of that category.
Mr. Chairman, with that being said, I will make a motion to approve the budget with those two changes.
We've got a motion.
Second.
Got a second discussion.
This is just approving the budget as stated, or we're making a call on the entire budget tonight? Is that what you want?
Yeah.
I just want to state that it would be my recommendation that we put that in the general fund, but I understand all of our previous discussions.
And I would concur also with Commissioner Ellis that we need to, at the same time, focus on continuing to increase that fund balances. I agree with you on that, Patrick. I sure do.
Any other questions, comments? Got a motion, can you say it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Let's take care of it. Moving along to item three, open business. Mr. Wood, would you like to lead us off on the American Rescue Plan discussion?
Yes, sir. So, I believe it was last month, the May meeting, there was, it was hot off the presses that the U.S. Treasury issued guidance, I think an hour before the meeting, for how local governments could spend monies that have been appropriated for, from the American Rescue Plan. So, I've talked about for maybe the last two months through meetings and other things. The bill language lays out essentially about four or five different parameters of public expenditure for these funds. And just to reiterate that for you tonight, there are five that have been broken out here. You can support public health response through COVID-19 mitigation, medical expenses, behavioral healthcare, those sorts of things. You can address negative economic impacts for workers directly, small businesses, nonprofits that have been impacted. You can replace public sector revenue loss, which is not applied to the county. If you had, you know, revenue decline, you can backfill that revenue loss. We have not had a true revenue loss as defined by the American Rescue Plan. So, that item does not affect us. There's premium pay for essential workers, frontline staff. And then the last item is water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure for drinking water, stormwater, flood control, wastewater, as well as expanded broadband. And those are, you know, 30,000-foot view explanations. Email of you last month, I think it's about 145 pages of the interim rule from Treasury that essentially just gets in great detail about those items. A little more specific on the details there. So, as I mentioned before, you have a deadline of December 2024 to obligate any funds you might receive. So, the county will receive $8.8 million over a two-year period. So, the first allocation was made this year, and then the second will be in 12 months. And those funds can be spent on those items. And so, we serve at your pleasure as far as if you have direction tonight, if you wanted to wait till next month or the month after. It's up to you all on how you would like to proceed on it.
Well, I can say without reservation that personally, I would want to see the water and the broadband both improved in our county in either one or both. But if we had to, that would be the direction I would want to go in on that personally.
In addition to that, I would like to consider the people that worked through the pandemic as a premium paid getting some type of bonus, in my opinion. The federal government is going down the wrong road and paying people to stay home. And I do think we need to say thank you to the people here in the county, of the county employees that have made it through the pandemic with their... employees that have made it through the pandemic with their, at some fashion. And I would like to do that. I would like to support 100% the water and broadband. I would like to have a strong focus on that as well. But I would like to try to change the focus from, we're going to pay you to stay home, to thank you for coming through and staying through the pandemic with us. If those are the only ways we can spend the money, that would be a way we can do that.
I'd like to jump on the broadband and the water situation. I guess I'd turn it around. I'd say broadband first, just because there are places in our county, such as at Buck Creek, you can't get a telephone, and for sure, you're not going to get internet, okay? So those students are being left behind, as well as people that have an opportunity to work from home at times. So we need to focus and see that we can, you know, support our citizens in being able to have communication.
From the calls I've received, and I think most of you would concur, broadband is the big item in the county from citizens of the county, it seems like, in the calls that I've been getting. So those are comments.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be glad to make a motion here in a minute.
Okay. House, do you have a comment?
On the public health side, is there any way to use part of that money toward the recreation program of the county to get the kids back out?
We looked into that in depth through the guidance from NACO as well as Treasury, and they're very specific that parks and trails and all the things we would maybe like to spend it on are not eligible. The only way you can do investments in non-water sewer broadband infrastructure is if it is directly related to health treatment, so like if you were building a health clinic or a vaccine clinic or something to that nature, very specifically. Or you had a revenue decline that you were backfilling, then you could spend it on any legal public purpose. But they're very clear that, you know, it's not under public health.
Good. And as, Mr. Chairman, I say, as was presented this in a very recent meeting, and Patrick brought it to you, the fact that the state has sent a letter wanting our feedback on specifically three areas that need attention, being the enterprise fund for our landfill operation, being, tell me here, Mr. Woodton, hand them all three down.
The waterways.
The water system and the fund balance. So the water system, we know that, as a board, we can't take money out of the general fund according to the guidance from the guidelines from state to help build that water system. So I'll go and say that.
You can't take it out for broadband either.
Yeah. But to me, we can serve a big function of people with bad wells down there because we get, you know, one guy in particular, I think, that's brought samples to us on a regular basis that lives off of this proposed extension right here we have. So I'll be glad to make a motion tonight, as Mr. Woodton has given us a document from McGill and Associates that showed a potential loop and then a pickup of a drive off Brentwood where this guy lives at. He's got several neighbors that are ready to sign on with bad wells, that we go ahead and authorize staff to advertise for an engineering firm to go in and then get the board's prices to do that extension and that loop. Because anytime you can loop it, you're not discharging water at the end of the line and paying for water going on the ground. So I would make that motion tonight just to get the ball rolling and look forward to more conversation on the other areas as we move forward.
Second. Motion second. Any other discussion? And then we'll revisit the broadband, broadband and the possibility of the item that Commissioner Patrick mentioned a while ago, which was, you know, a good thought, a good idea. We've got a motion on this in a second. So any other questions, Congressman? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, Mr. Woodton, you have direction on that?
Thank you.
On the broadband, just a little bit more specifically, the committee that you serve on with Keith and a few of them, he was, I think that he sent out a letter, that was a few months ago, it was about 30 grand per mile, and if it was above ground, 60,000 underground. But I would like to, I don't know who, maybe Garrett Berryhill on the school system could let us know where the focus would be as far as helping get broadband to certain areas of the county that's more populated, to try to go ahead and get that started as well. But if I could just ask if you could find out where those pockets are in talking with that committee, because I think the committee already knows where those are. And if you could just kind of help bring that back up, maybe we can discuss that at a future meeting.
One of the really weak areas is out in, going toward the Mudcut area, out in there in Upper, you know, one of the really weak areas.
Right. But now, we've got to, like Morris, broadband drop. They've got the overhead warrant that you ran it.
Down the Sheffield Road.
Right. But they have not, they're doing the bill now to run to individual houses, so I don't know exactly what they're going to cover until they get that done.
And that's like 2,230 bucks or something?
Right.
Per, from the road to their house?
Right.
That's in addition to. And it's my understanding that's going to be a cost to the homeowner. And what I understand, this is going to be for public, which is going to be on roads itself. But maybe we could find out that for clarity.
Well, one question I would say, would the grant allow, would the grant allow from the main trunk line, could the grant absorb that cost? Because one thing I want to do for the water, and this is standard, we've done this with other grants, that if somebody, we have, somebody wants to tap on and we're doing an extension, we go ahead and pay the tap-on fees out of the grant. That way, they can tap on free of charge, basically. And so I would hope that the broadband, there will be the same ability to do something like that to offset the cost, as I was saying.
Our next meeting, I'll make sure and get some information and bring it back.
Thank you. That's just the more information we need to get and talk about.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. All right, moving on to the next item, the shooting range update. Mr. Woodton?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Marsh mentioned last week there was a site visit of the property, and things are proceeding a little behind original schedule, but a lot had to do with weather. That afternoon, after that tour, the architect, Mr. Hammack, did open bids for the small building on the site. And they were below estimate on one end, as far as, based on some of the numbers we've seen lately, but they were above the estimate going back two years from when we put out some of the numbers. So what I mean is that with the pandemic, a lot of building material costs have just been skyrocketing. And so there was a concern that this would, that project would be maybe unattainable. So while it is higher, it is within reach and within reason. And so staff, we've got that here. There's an action item here that would ask you to receive the bids and then award the low bid for the building to England Builders in the amount of $380,000 for that building.
Which was a low bid?
That's right.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion we approve the bid and approve the awarding of the bid to England Builders.
Second. Got a motion second. Discussion.
One question. What was the, initially, what did they project the cost to be for that bid? Just out of curiosity.
I think it was about 250.
250.
Said about two years ago. So again, this is 90% federal funding.
Oh, yeah. Get 10, get 90 every day.
Okay. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, Mr. Woodton, emergency services project update.
Right. We do not have pictures in the packet this time, but if you do have an opportunity to go to Barnes Road and see the Hickworths building, it is coming right along. If you'd ever like to go on a tour of the facility, I know we can arrange that with the contractor at your convenience. We do have an action item. Duke Energy requires an easement to serve the property with electricity, which is probably a good thing. So we would ask you to approve the easement that is attached.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the Duke Energy easement as attached.
Second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next item will be under administrative items. Mr. Woodton will let you take the floor again.
Sure. I'll start with the first item, the item that was added. This is the Door Associates. Really quickly, just so it's in the record, though, the city and county have partnered with each other to clean up what was the Drexel Heritage Site in the city of Marion. Again, the prior property owner left essentially a disaster area, and so the city and county received that property from that person and received grant funds to assist with the cleanup of that site. When the original cleanup project was bid, there was a company called Door Associates that bid on the project, and they were the low bidder. They did withdraw their bid before there was an actual award made, but there was some dispute over when that withdrawal was made. The city and county claimed that it was after the allowable time under the statute, and the company refuted that claim. Long story short, there was a lawsuit filed. The lawsuit went into mediation. A settlement has been discussed in closed session previously, and so we do have a settlement back before you in the amount of $25,000 for the case CBS 8A1, City of Marion and McDowell County versus Door and Associates and Western Surety Company. We do ask that you approve this settlement of 25,000. That would be shared between the city and county.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the settlement with the proceeds being deposited in fund balance.
Second. Motion second. In discussion. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, next one, administrative.
So you have a Nebo water system leak adjustment of $33.09. You have that explanation before you ask you approve.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the settlement presented.
Second. Motion second. All in favor?
I did put together quite a few project closeout funds, resolutions, and project budget ordinances for the Becklestone, the Baxter Healthcare, the Courthouse Project, Toolcraft Building Reuse, and the American Rescue Plan Fund, which essentially adds that to a special revenue fund. Ask you approve.
Motion to approve. Got a second. In discussion. All in favor say aye.
Then you have several amendments. Not an understatement to say several. There's GS 65 through 83, and then 911 F4, Transit 3, SR 3, SI 2, and SI 3. Ask that you approve those as presented.
My commission will approve those as approved.
Okay. Mr. Vaughn made a motion to approve. All in favor say aye. Got a second from Mr. Ellis? In discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay.
That's all under administrative.
All right. Out of the lead, the Muddy Creek Watershed Engineering Service, Mr. Woodton?
Yes, sir. Quickly on this, and maybe new information, but a reminder as well, the county supports what is called the Muddy Creek Watershed Commission of the maintenance and operation of nine flood control dams along the Muddy Creek Watershed, primarily in the southeastern part of the county, although there is one in the Nebo area and then one on Ashworth Road. The structures were built from the early 60s into the late 60s to prevent flood damage downstream from those structures. The county provides money every year for maintenance, which is mowing, and if things break, you know, they're repaired and we move on. A lot of that coordination happens with the Soil and Water Board staff. We do have one structure, it's called the Louder Dam. This is in the Dyersfield community. That is a dry structure. And so what is, that means that the other eight, if you go out to those structures, there is a lake or a pond. This one does not retain water. It is designed purposely to allow water to flow in the creek into the riser structure that is there, and it flows out of a discharge pipe below the dam. This is based on the original design in agreement with the property owners back in the 50s and 60s when the easements were acquired. Due to the design of the structure, it's very difficult for maintenance. And so when there is a high water event, which Mr. Keller and Mr. Walker can attest, they've seen high water events there, several of us have, it is very difficult to maintain. We've had folks on boats with long poles trying to get debris dislodged from these structures at times. And so staff has worked, has met with Soil and Water Board, the Watershed Commission Board. Chairman Brown has been at least one of these meetings to just have a better understanding of what can be done here. So since those original meetings, staff has met, again, with the Watershed Commission to, with McGill Associates. Advertisement was put out for an engineer, and McGill has put forth a proposal on some ideas on how to improve the maintenance of that facility to where it is a lot safer, the maintenance would be less costly in the long run, and I go back to safety, it would not be a person on a boat in the middle of a rainstorm with a long pole trying to dislodge. So what this would do is it would do, this contract would have a design of the appearances that would be put in. It does not have the actual construction, that would be separate, but this would do the design permitting and then the construction oversight.
This would give McGill Associates permission to move forward.
That's right.
If it were up to me, and I know it's not, you know, the feds control this, but if it were up to me, I would be giving these ponds to the surrounding home, property owners and be rid of them, because I see nothing but dead expense for the county. They're, most of them are, what, 50-plus years old?
They are.
And so, you know, it's just going to be something that's going to be eaten away out for a long time. So what's the place report?
Make a motion to approve the engineering contract as presented.
Second. Motion second. In discussion. All in favor say aye.
There is nothing that we can do as far as getting out of that.
That's part of the TBA, isn't it? Is it part of the TBA?
It was originally federal funding that provided for the construction. And once you have a dam that's there, it's very hard to remove it, and you're looking at probably multiple millions of dollars in the removal. You'd have to, if you got out of it, you would have to remove the structures.
And this is covered the expense under the American Rescue Plan, correct?
Okay. Okay. Moving on to item C, school property item. Mr. Woodton?
Yes, sir. Mr. Garrett and staff reached out to us. This is related to East Middle School. They had put up a fence along their property line, I believe, honestly noticed that it was close to, very close to existing structures from neighbors. And so instead of going through the process of having houses moved or barns or whatever, it was determined that maybe the best course of action would be to sell that property to the adjacent property owners. They're required to offer that property to the county for purchase, and staff has looked at it and has no county usage at all.
It's pretty important. Make a motion to approve the resolution as presented. Second. Second. In discussion. Any discussion? All papers say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item B under the business, this is the transit policy approval. Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir. Mr. Hollifield, our transit director, had a recent review with the state, and there were two policies that we did not have on record, being an ADA policy and a grants management policy. And so what you see before you is the requested templates. I would ask that you approve tonight.
Please report.
My commission, we approve.
Second. Motion second. Any discussion? All papers say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Out of me, fireworks permit approval. Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Suddles, being Jay Suddles, our chief building inspector, had come to the understanding recently that there is a law change that requires the Board of Commissioners to formally approve fireworks permits for private entities. And so he is receiving these permit applications for five events that are shown here in your packet. He has reviewed the details and has recommended approval of the five.
Okay. Motion to accept. As presented. Second. Motion second. Any discussion? All papers say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Okay. Tax matters, Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir. These are fairly typical releases, refunds and rebuilds. Just let me know if you have any questions.
Have we had any luck on the former owner of the Highway 55?
I did discuss that with a tax collector, and there was, I guess, a complicating factor that there was a bankruptcy involved, and she has recommended it be released due to that complicating factor.
So our tax lane should take priority, correct?
We could table it if you like.
I'd make a motion to table that until it gets over there.
Second. Okay. Got a motion, second. To table? Questions coming? All papers say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Okay. Out of G, board appointments. Out of clerk.
We have three committees and boards that are up for the second reading. I put the ballot on your desk. The first one's from Tourism and Development Authority. There are two members' terms expiring. They must meet the following qualifications. The first opening is for a motel operator under 50 rooms. There was one application from Bridget Walters, a room's a room request. And the second is for a tourism-related provider, and there was one applicant with that qualification, and that was Brandy Hillman. The second that you'll be voting for is the, I think it's the McDowell Tech Ward Trustees. There is one vacancy. This is the second reading, so you're going to vote. And there are five applications. That's Roger Wesley, Alex Portelli, Billy Klein, William Keller, and Megan Webster. And then the last one, the jury commission, has one vacancy, and this is also the second reading. We received three applications, and they're from Larry Lyle, Linda Hartwood, Megan Webster. Also would like to present as a first reading, the following boards and committees have vacancies, and I'll be advertising those after this meeting. That's NEDA Board, the focal point advisory committee, planning board, and the transportation advisory board.
Okay. All right. If you will.
One comment or one question for staff. Mr. Wood, did you have a chance to check, because one applicant does not live in McDowell County?
You do not have a policy against non-residents being appointed to county boards?
Okay. So it'd be a board preference then, correct?
That's right.
It is unanimous for Bridget Walters and Brandy Hillman, and it is, the vote from Jury commission is Larry Lyle. That's also unanimous.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Also, we have, the board needs to decide on a voting delegate for the NCAA annual conference visiting session. That'll be on Saturday, August 14th, at 12:45 in Hanover County. Commissioners Ellis, Von, and Allison, as well as the county manager myself, will be attending that. You can vote on delegate tonight, or you can wait to the meeting next month. Next month, the organization starts.
Mr. Chairman, I have no preference. Who wants to do it? Between the three going.
Have you been before?
I have been before, and I did that before. But this year, it's going to be hard for me, because I need to be in Indiana that evening.
Yeah, for the dozen. Okay. We had a volunteer just in.
Make a motion, Patrick Goss, to be the voting delegate at the convention.
And Chris the alternate.
And Chris as alternate.
Right. Also, the McDowell Trails Committee would like to start meeting again, perhaps quarterly, with maybe representation from the board.
Let me get a second on that motion. It would just make sense to, you second it.
Second.
All papers say aye.
Aye.
Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Vice Chairman Walker has been serving on the Trails Committee.
Sure. I love trails. I love exercise and love trails.
Yeah, he likes to walk trail.
So they would like to start that back up quarterly?
Sounds good. Be glad to serve.
And that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the citizen comments. Do we have anyone here that wishes to speak on behalf of the citizen comments? Okay. If you will, just sign in and state your name. Okay. That's all on citizen comments. Mr. Staff, any reports? Anything?
I'd only ask that you adjourn or recess until tomorrow night at 5:00 for the meeting with the rescue squad.
Make a motion to recess until tomorrow at 5:00, leave rescue squad.
Motion second. All papers. Leading is adjourned.
Resessed.
Or recessed.